... and communicate with council early in the process, even post-retreat, which obviously, council is considering big ideas and setting objectives and goals and priorities and aspirations for the upcoming budget. And prior to last year, there would be sort of a blackout period where there would be radio silence, staff would go away, crunch numbers, formulate ideas, convert the council direction into a recommended budget, and then present that to the council in late March, and then council would resume their consideration. Last year, I think largely it was an idea that originated with Mayor Short, that perhaps it would be helpful to check in more regularly through the process, make sure that the council was apprised of the sort of the budget conditions as they were unfolding, themes as they were emerging, and in doing so, hopefully, the council is more prepared to receive a recommendation and immediately begin consideration of the recommended budget presented by the city manager. So, we're in keeping with that system. It's still relatively new. These early work sessions, I don't know to what extent the council wants something to grab on to. The staff, I feel like that this is more, again, making sure that you're aware of any twists and turns, what are the base assumptions, what are the base priorities that we're working on, and then, again, making sure you're better prepared in March to receive a recommendation. You will notice that we will present preliminary information and forecasts, so those can change, although they're not likely to change by more than a percent or a half a percent. And then, we will regularly restate and seek confirmation on assumptions, such as assumptions we typically are referring to what we believe to be the direction we've heard from council regarding tax rates and utility rates and fees. And then, the goals. What are the top priorities that the council would like to see achieved, or worked on, addressed, attended to in the recommended budget? So, as you see those, I don't want you to become, that is a prompt for the council to sort of actively confirm, yes, we are still thinking that, or if, for whatever reason, there is sort of modification in your thinking there, please communicate that as well. And similarly with assumptions. If you have new ideas, as we present information about opportunities where rates and tax rates are concerned, fees are concerned, the earlier that the staff knows about that, the better opportunity we have to incorporate that into a recommended budget. I think the key thing that the manager seeks in this environment is alignment, alignment between what eventually will be a recommended budget for your consideration and yours being the council's aspirations, goals, and expectations. And we'll talk about another key element of alignment later in the presentation. So, that's the introductory remarks. I think Mr. Shaw is going to step us through some database information that is providing the boundaries or framework for the 2021 budget.
Again, as Mr. Hamp says, one of the key things we want to ensure is that there's alignment between your broad priorities, as we've discussed, really, most of them over the course of two different retreats with the council, starting with employee compensation. And as you recall, our last, our first budget work session, last time we had a work session, you got a presentation from Nicole Nicholson, HR Director, about the results of the compensation study. And so, we assume that that is still top priority for the council. We've had a number of joint meetings of the school board and city council, and I think that we hear that schools and school teacher compensation are important for the council as well. And hopefully, you've read that the budget news for the school board is actually quite good this year, between additional money that they're receiving from the city and the additional money they receive from the state, especially in some areas for really needed programs in the community. The news from the school superintendent, at least to us, has been quite good. We established with Mr. McCormick's guidance last year, I think, one of the best capital improvement programs, especially in terms of not only identifying projects, but figuring out strategies to fund those projects, and being more directive in terms of the priorities of the projects. So, we assume that that's a continuing priority of council. We always assume that the council wants to maintain current levels of service in the community, at the very least. And then, in this past work session, or the past retreat with the council, we heard a lot more conversation about desire to better communicate with citizens and constituents about the activities of the city. And so, as that applies to budget, I mean, there are certainly things that we look at and say, well, we can accomplish many of those things just, you know, by taking better advantage of resources we already have. And a lot of things that are not very costly, you know, that we're, I don't know if you've noticed, but we've started to put out more publications, brochures about public works services and things like that. So, but, as Mr. Hamp alluded to, that if these are not the priorities of the council, if we're not aligned, we need to know that sooner rather than later. So, for this evening's agenda, the items that we would hope to cover, one is to give the council a good overall sense of the budget as it stands today, and some of our preliminary thinking as we head towards a budget recommendation. I think last year, we called it situational awareness. It's just being aware of what, you know, what challenges and opportunities exist. Well, we do have some initial revenue and expenditure numbers that drive the budget. We won't be talking about all of the various departmental budgets quite yet, but just some of the big issues that we, you know, that are way on us as we get out of the gate, you know, even before we're reviewing the department's budgets, really. We look quickly at, at least, the magnitude of supplemental requests that come in from the departments, that the way our budget process works, is that the department directors submit the budget, that's the current operating budget, and any changes that are necessary to sustain the current operations. And those could be changes in utility rates, or generally, the things that are, the materials and services that are purchased, software maintenance, or whatever it may be, that go into sustaining current levels of service. And then, they have a supplemental budget that are capital requests, that are small capital items, or things that they feel like are necessary in terms of maintenance, or adding more capacity to the services that we provide, or greater capacity in their minds. We'll certainly look at school funding, where the formula places us this year. We'll quickly look at some assumptions we're making about enterprise rates, and then, you know, we've given some thought to what we think the topics that we would want to cover in our next budget work session. I'm sorry that, maybe that font is a little small, but the, in the top heading are the revenue increases that, as we've estimated them as we sit here today. And these are broad categories, that obviously, this doesn't constitute all of the revenues of the city, and these are simply changes. These aren't the sum of these revenues as much as they're increases in these revenues. As Mr. Hamp, again, alluded to, that there's still refinement. We would like to get one month, more months summary of revenues under our belt before we finalize our revenue projections, but we don't think they're going to change dramatically. And so, as we look at it today, we are expecting, just through organic growth, we assume that all of the general fund tax rates would stay the same. And so, through organic growth, we would expect to have a bit less than a million-dollar increase in the overall budget. And just as a quick summary of what those primary revenues are, we would expect to have some increase in personal, business personal property and motor vehicles, which is personal property, mostly because of the base increasing. As we've discussed, Commissioner of Revenue has signaled that she intends to change the assessment method for motor vehicles, which would tend to make most individual bills go down. However, if people are still buying new vehicles, then that base is increasing. And I think also her assessments, as she's estimating them on business personal property, are going to go up. So, a bit more than a half a million dollar increase there. As you may recall, in the last year, the council approved funding to do an allocation study, and it's something we do periodically. You're aware that there's a transfer that's made between the enterprise funds to the general fund to pay for overhead costs. And those are things like payroll services, and that all of the billing, purchasing those kinds of things are centralized in the general fund, or even the services provided by the city attorney, time that's taken into consideration for management, and other types of overhead. And then, that allocation is important for both understanding what those services are, the value of those services provided to the streets fund and the general, or the enterprise funds. And so, as we completed that allocation study, which is done by a third-party independent auditor, the, it looks like the allocation transfer from the enterprises to the general fund will increase. Investment income is up somewhat. We are fairly constrained in the common law as to the types of investment instruments that we're allowed to participate in. And so, don't get the impression that we're out there buying penny stocks, or junk bonds, or anything like that. But it's, but still, the market is good, and those investments that we can invest in have done better than expected. Rolling stock, tax will be up. It looks like we will get some additional money for the shared expenses that we have with state, that's your constitutional officers, the comp board, and then also the, some of the assistance we get for the police department. There's been some growth in building permits and fees, and so, that number may go up even a little bit more. Those aren't huge dollars, but building activity has been pretty healthy, and so, those permit fees are up. One thing that we've been looking at, we may come back to you with, is that we've done a survey of the surrounding jurisdictions, and we find that our permit fees are lower than most of the jurisdictions that surround us. And so, there may be an opportunity to increase those fees somewhat. I don't think that we would get to the point where we're essentially paying for the entire services of the building official and his staff, but I think we could, as I look at the percentage that we are receiving of their, their cost compared to some other localities and the fees themselves, I think there's some opportunity for growth there. But again, those aren't big dollars. But as we look at it again, we would expect that the revenues increase a little less than a million dollars. When we look on the expenditure side, these are expenditures that really are outside of the control of the operating departments. So, these are outside agencies and other contributions that are, you know, that may have to do with the operation of the city, but they're somewhat out of our control in the immediate budget year. One, as we discussed in the last session, I think, and we have, I have another slide that details the growth in school contributions, but our contribution to the city schools is going to go up by about $727,000 over the contribution we're making in the current year. And I want to be clear, I hope I don't confuse the issue, but I think in Dr. Castle's contribution, he told the school board that the local contribution will go up by nearly a half a million dollars. And he's right, and we're right. And it has to do with the way each of us view when we recognize, you know, when we're comparing what fiscal year to what fiscal year. So, as you may recall, in this, the current fiscal year, we had a restatement of tax proceeds from 2018, and that was as a result of the audit that was completed for 2019. And it, basically, it was a tax reconciliation that meant that we had to restate a prior year's balance. So, there were tax proceeds that we received, but that weren't coded properly into the proper fiscal year. And when that was done, it meant that there was a portion of those proceeds owed to the school board. So, we moved those proceeds to them in fiscal year 20. So, that increases their budget for fiscal year 20. So, Dr. Castle is looking at the increase from the current fiscal year to fiscal year 2021, and he's correct. If you add that, if he includes that $200,000, it's about a $500,000, a little less than $500,000 increase. But for us, the reality is that when we look at the school contribution that we sent to them this year, and it doesn't include that money, it's because we've been able to take advantage of those proceeds. And it's a little bit akin to the issue with, I look back to the town center money, where we were always, you're two years behind in terms of when we calculate the formula and when the schools actually get their money. So, there's, if a big expenditure falls off for us, we can enjoy the benefit of those dollars for two years before the schools start to share in the additional savings. And so, that's, if there's a bit of a lag between when you're recognizing the CAFR for 2019 and calculating your budget for 2021. So, I hope I haven't confused that, other than to say, we have to come up with an additional $727,000 for, you know, this year coming up, to make our contribution based on formula. Is that a fair rendering of the subject, Cameron?
Yes.
So, health insurance is going up about $237,000 for us. Our health insurance is actually, the premiums are based on a calendar year, so that constitutes an increase that was about 13% that kicked into the beginning of this year, and will carry through the first part of the next fiscal year, the first six months of the next fiscal year. And then, we're calculating an additional increase in the second part of the fiscal year, first part of the next calendar year. I don't, it doesn't seem, it doesn't appear as if it's going to go up as dramatically as it did this past year. We have a consultant that gives us advice in the purchase of health insurance. We work with them on, you know, recommend, any number of recommendations that are meant to help reduce our healthcare, health insurance cost. But it's a valuable benefit that we provide to, you know, our employees. And I think we have done a number of things to try to cut costs there in terms of only offering lower point-of-service benefits. We've looked into things like health savings plans and things like that. They don't look like, they look like they would be a good program, but expensive for us to get into, to step into. And we, you know, periodically shop the health insurance generally, and we take it to the market periodically. Our required contribution, city side of the required contribution to the Virginia retirement system will go up by about a percent and a half, which is about a $200,000 cost to the general fund. That's entirely on the city's side of the contribution, that employees also have a required contribution that will stay the same. So, all employees make contributions to the VRS system as well. And it varies somewhat in term, depending on when they came into the system and what plan they're on. In other words, you have, the earliest plan was, is called Plan One, and the employees on Plan One have a defined benefit pension. As you got to Plan Two, that started to scale back, and now, you have folks, anybody that enters into the system today is a hybrid employee, and they have a portion of their system is a defined benefit, and a portion is a defined contribution. So, a portion works like the old pension does, and a portion works like a, you know, it's a 457, but it's more or less like a 401K for a private industry. Our contribution to the Middle River Regional Jail operation is anticipated to go up by about $200,000. The programs that are provided by Department of Social Services, Conference of Services Act, and the Virginia Public Assistance Programs are expected to go up by about $160,000, $170,000. And then, as you're aware, the way that we program merit increases in fiscal year 20 is that those benefits, or the, sorry, the merit doesn't kick in until October, so there's a quarter of the year that, where you're reaping some savings. But by the time you move into this fiscal year, you have a whole year's worth of that cost, so that everybody's salary is calculated at whatever the value of that one quarter savings was for the entire year this year, plus whatever merit we're able to give. So, as you look at it, the math is not great for us, that the, you know, without even looking through the department's operating budgets, we are already at a deficit. And so, so that's the challenge that we assume going into the budget year, or part of the challenge that we assume. And just briefly, to hit on supplemental requests, because oftentimes, I would say most often, you know, it's, it's very difficult to fund all of, any of the supplemental requests in some departments that come to us. But I think it's good for the council to be aware that you have professionals, police chief or fire chief, public works director, who are indicating to us that they feel like they need additional resources to be able to provide service to the community. And so, with the police department, the supplemental requests are bid over a million dollars, and that's just about exclusively in personnel, police officers, investigators, animal control officer, and then the things, the equipment and uniforms and all of the things that go with outfitting a police officer, or whatever the other professional is. You're well aware of the results of the compensation classification study, and to implement all of the phases as was, as were outlined in the study, would cost just less than a million dollars in the general fund. Public Works have a supplemental request, about $730,000, and that's almost exclusively in paving. The public works director feels like if we rely solely on the urban maintenance funds that we're served from the Virginia Department of Transportation, that we're not keeping up with the level of service that, at least that he would like to achieve. And then, as well, we have a number of streets in the city that are not eligible for money in the urban maintenance program. And so, there's, there's a portion of that $730,000 is a request. is a request for some non-allowable paving. And then finally, that we would like to start to set aside some money for the construction of sidewalks. We can use urban maintenance money to repair sidewalks, but we feel like there's areas where we'd like to expand the sidewalk system, and we would have to fund that locally. And oftentimes, we would do that, we have some, for instance, we're doing some matching dollars on revenue sharing and that sort of thing, but, so those are the, that's the nature of that request. The Economic Development Director had supplemental requests, again, of nearly $700,000, and that included a lot of programmatic increases for marketing, some consulting fees to study things like the nature of the retail economy here to try to target niche retailers. There's money that's, that would be allocated to support the Technology Zone Program that the council recently adopted. There's a position in the, in his request for somebody who would be a marketing specialist. And then about half of that request would be for some sort of a large project in the downtown area, either, you know, something along the lines of a low-interest loan program or really a capital investment. The Emergency Operations Operate Directors asked for an additional $137,000. That would include a staff member, and then the rest is primarily equipment or some programmatic things to do continuity of operation, planning. The Fire Department has asked for $462,000 additional dollars in supplement, which would be salaries for six additional firefighters and two shifts. And then Parks and Recreation Director has asked for an additional quarter of a million dollars, and that's a variety of things that are equipment, mowers, things like that, some parks maintenance, building maintenance additions, and then some smaller items that are decorations for Christmas and downtown banners, things like that. And then the sum of all of the other supplemental requests across the organization are a little less than $292,000, which brings our supplemental request total to about four and a half million dollars. Dr. Hostetter, I'll go back one slide, and to give you the quick version, we anticipate that perhaps we'll have a bit less than a million dollars in new revenue from, based on organic growth, without any kind of tax rate increases this year. We're assuming that there would not be tax rate increases this year. However, a lot of the requests that are, I don't want to say they're totally beyond their control, but quite difficult to control in an upcoming budget year, amount to a bit more than $1.6 million. Those are either merely outside agencies or things like required contributions to health insurance and Virginia retirement system, or additional contribution to the school board based on the formula. We've mentioned school funding, and I just present this as more or less a trend line in where we are with contributions to the school system. It's been going up 2% to 3% each year. 2020 looks like that it didn't go up nearly as much, but I, again, I would remind the council that in 2020, there were some tax dollars that were not recognized in 2018, and once that was reconciled, we made an appropriation to the school system, so that, that $15 million really became 15.2 or 13 million. And so this year, the contribution reflects that entire amount, and about $500,000 additional dollars, so about a 4.83% increase over our last year's original budget. Briefly, some assumptions we're making about enterprise fund rates, that four years ago now, the city conducted a water and sewer rate study, and the rate study was meant to ensure the long-term financial stability of the enterprise systems and to test affordability and equity, equity in the way that we structure our rates. And so, since then, the council has adopted rates as were prescribed by the study. This year, the study has no scheduled increase for water, a 1.5% increase for sewer, which I think we calculated for the average residential customer, that that's about $1.75 per bi-monthly bill increase, or about $8 a year. And then, as we discussed with the council last year, we wanted to move debt service that's in, was in the general fund to the Stormwater Enterprise, and that it meant we would have to increase the rates in order to make debt service, pay debt service from the Stormwater Enterprise, and then as well, to be able to continue to do what we would consider to be small capital or maintenance items. Really, one of the things that we, we certainly do, you know, maintenance projects that with our crews or we pursue, what are perhaps portions of capital projects that were identified in the Stormwater Capital Improvement Project list. And what I mean portions of it, that sometimes you can take one of those projects and start to look at it in pieces and phases, and you start to work your way from the top of a drainage shed down in, you know, in sort of bite-sized chunks that we can take on. So that 15% increase, again, is, you know, on, a year, I think, was about $8, you know, per residential, you know, typical residential user. One of the issues that we'll want to discuss with council in more detail has to do with refuse rates. And you're well aware that we did a solid waste management evaluation in the past year, and there were some recommendations that came out of that evaluation to increase the refuse rates from their current $14.5 a month, and really for a couple of purposes. One was that the city could take the current post-closure activities that occur in the Waynesboro landfill, which are typically $175,000, $200,000 a year, paid for from the general fund, and put them in the refuse fund, or have them paid for by the refuse customers. I'm not sure that, in fact, I'm sure that the staff isn't entirely enamored of that idea. While it gives you some relief in the general fund, I think you're, we find it's, it's, there's a really challenging equity issue there, who should be paying for those post-closure activities, and it's probably, it's most equitable that they're paid for from general tax dollars. It's an overarching obligation of the city of Waynesboro, and has little benefit to, no benefit really, to a current refuse customer, to any greater degree than it has to any other taxpayer citizen in the city. It's a debatable topic, but I think that's at least where staff is lining up. Another issue, though, that I think is more compelling is that we know that there are pending, there is a pending cell opening at the Augusta County Service Authority landfill over in Jollyview, where we are a, an owner, and are part owner. We're in a regional partnership with Augusta County and Stanton in that landfill. So when that cell opens, we'll be expected to make a contribution, a capital contribution above and beyond the capital that's being held for us there in reserve based on tipping fees that accrue to the city because of trash that's collected in the city by commercial haulers. And so as we look to 2021, 2022, 2023, we see that we will start to fall short in our capital contribution. We have set aside about $350,000, but over that period of time, we'll need more than a million dollars out there. So one of the thoughts that we feel is compelling is that we could raise the refuse rates incrementally and be able to make a contribution to that capital. Otherwise, and this has happened to some of the other localities, you make a contribution from your general fund to cover the capital. We feel like right now, and the, and the rate, the refuse study confirmed that we provide a good service to the community. It's a lower rate than the competing commercial haulers in the community, and that we have a solid operation, that as they looked at our operation, they basically said, you follow most good management practices in the industry. And in fact, Waynesboro is doing a number of things that we wish other localities would do, or we advise other localities to do. And so I think there's some opportunity there. We benefit mightily. The refuse customer benefits mightily from our ownership in a landfill. So we're, they're basically getting a subsidized tipping fee because there are enough commercial haulers to have covered our capital cost up to this point in time. So I think that will be an issue that we're going to want to get feedback from the council. We're not ready to make a recommendation to you, but I certainly think that's something the staff is seriously thinking that we would do, and that, you know, another dollar, $2 on that rate would still keep us below the rates that commercial haulers are asking in the city, and it would be basically set aside, you know, as for contribution on tipping fees to help offset the capital costs that we would incur in the coming years.
How many customers do we have?
About 6,500 customers in the city, and there are about 8,500 occupied households. Now, some of those are in apartments and things like that where they have a dumpster, but, you know, so we capture a fair percentage of the market. And then that, of course, doesn't include commercial users that have dumpsters. We don't have a dumpster operation.
Maybe that's where we get our tipping fees, right?
That's where a lot, yes, absolutely, and especially some of the industries, you know, in the city are big users, and, but yes, the commercial haulers that operate in the city are helping subsidize, you know, the landfill operation for the city, basically.
So $350,000 set aside right now for the cell opening, for the next cell opening. And that's, that's, that's cash on hand that we have, and the, and the total cost to open a cell would be about a million dollars to us.
Yeah, it was, that as we start to see it, in the first year, we'll have a shortfall of about $50,000. The next year would be about $150,000, and then the third year, it's about $900,000. And so you get to a bit more than a million dollars that we'll need by that third year. But it's a, what the landfill operator, the director out there does is basically shows us our financials, and he's estimating, what are you getting off of tipping fees that's offsetting your capital cost, and where will you start to see a shortfall? So you can get there a couple of years with cash on hand, but then you're going to get really, we will get really hit in that third year.
Yeah, so I guess you'll come up with some, what that calculates to, because 6,500 users doesn't add up to a million dollars very easily.
No, I mean, you, well, 6,500 times, let's say, if you add a dollar, you know, 65, you know, times 12, you know, that, or how about if you add $2 and, you know, so, and then considering you do have some offset, $350,000. And there's, the other thing we take into consideration is that the retained earnings in the fund are healthy, and they've grown over time. Now, you have to have a certain amount you hold and, you know, but we also use those retained earnings to replace refuse trucks. And so part of what we're working through is, how do we work in fleet replacement and, you know, and then also have perhaps some of those retained earnings that we could send to this issue, and that some of the $350,000 that are held are monies that we transferred in the past from the refuse fund retained earnings to try, because we've seen this, this issue coming from some time, so we've occasionally moved some money from the retained earnings to the refuse fund. So part of what we're working through is just figure out, where do we think the retained earnings need to be? What do we have in, you know, in some vehicle replacement costs that are looming, and then is there some money left there that we could offset some of those costs? It won't be huge, but it could be six figures.
So I think what we would, for this evening's purpose, get a signal from council if that's at least a recommendation that you would receive, if we can include something in terms of a recommendation for a refuse collection fee in a recommended budget.
I would be, I mean, based on the, the information we gained from the study, again, as you said, we are below the, the other competitors in our market. They are finding that they can't, you know, do it for as, as little as we are doing it for. And so I think it's still reasonable to say, hey, if we've got increased expenses for handling that trash, that solid waste, that's a reasonable place to consider generating.
Essentially utility, meaning light bills go up, gas bills go up, cable bills go up.
Well, and it may be worth noting that the refuse charge has not gone up since 2008, and so, we've, we've held steady for quite a long time. The, those are the topics that we wanted to cover tonight to give, again, the idea is to give you, you know, on the highest level, sense of some of the issues as they exist today, put the budget for 2021 in context. The next meeting, I believe, scheduled for March 4th, which is a couple of weeks from tonight, and the topics that we had thought might be important for council, one would be conversation, presentation about existing fund balance and the CIP, that as we looked at, you know, the, this, the 2019 audit, we know that our unassigned fund balance has gone up beyond the amount that should be held in a committed reserve according to the council's fund balance policy. And so we have some money in fund balance to work with there, and then how we match that up to the CIP, and then some other issues related to generally funding the CIP and the projects that are scheduled for 2021, but then also maybe a little bit of a look ahead to 2022. We'd like to always be thinking about CIP and at least, you have a five-year CIP, but looking at least at a couple of years at a time. And then we all have some refined numbers for expenditures and revenue that we can talk about, and then just to keep it on everybody's calendar, that March 30th at 6:00 PM is the date and time scheduled for city manager's budget presentation this year.
Game on.
When will we get the Dr. Castle's presentation?
We have to get the budget at least by a date in March.
I think it's the last Monday in March, or the last regular meeting in March. So I think the 30th is the scheduled meeting. I think he has to have it to us by 23rd.
Yeah. Now, I think what happened last year, and as my understanding, you know, talking to Dr. Castle, last year, he sent the budget, and they came and presented at a later date, which was, is acceptable. So we would have the budget, but maybe the council won't have the presentation until whatever the first meeting in April, yeah.
Now, last year was exceptionally, was a different climate than this year, so I think he was doing his best to sort of buy time to come to some improved resolution than where he was at a particular date early in the process.
As, as we understand it, and Dr. Hostetter apologized, that... As we understand it, and Dr. Hoster apologized, if you were here when this was said, but that Dr. Castle's presentation to his board, you know, indicates that he's in really good shape this year. That between additional funds from the state, especially for some of the really necessary programs here in the city, and then with an additional contribution from the city, he's balanced as we speak and I think has programmed four percent, or raised for teacher percent.
For all faculty. One item on the revenue increases was, where do we stand on meals, lodging, sales tax?
Generally relatively flat. We might have some growth in meals and we may have some growth in lodging. We'd like to get one more month of sales in, but there may be a little growth there. Cameron, do you have thoughts about beyond that?
They're all strong. I've branded this flat for the time being because I can always revisit them. They're due middle of, they're due middle of the following month. So by the time we meet again, I'll have January's data for meals and then I'll have sales tax. Sales has been strong all the way through. December was a little bit down year over year, which is why I just paused a little bit. Year over year, it's up in total, but it was down a little bit from the year before. But a lot of times that's just, you'll see a pop back in January where something didn't get paid to the state quite on time. So I wanted one more month of data to get January's in, so I knew exactly where we were.
Looking at that delta of six hundred and change, you know, almost seven hundred thousand in revenue increase, which is expenditure increase, and trying to figure out that's four cents, so.
Well, I mean, there's some things to consider that, you know, we can give you more information as we shape up some of the ideas about fund balance, capital plans, those kinds of things. But bearing in mind that in the current year budget, there was a fair amount of money that was sent to the capital plan from operating, the operating budget. So in other words, money that we're generating this year is being used to fund the capital improvement project. And that's the, you know, an optimum way to do it. That typically you want to look at whatever surplus you have at the end of one year that falls to your some fund balance and say, can that be reallocated to capital? And then there's some funding that's going from your operating budget. But that means that you do have some play. Now, we weren't sure, as we, you know, talked about it, at how soon and how much we can get into conversation, but that there's, there's going to be some natural tension that occurs between how much emphasis you're putting on your operating budget and especially compensation for employees, which is going to be an expensive item to address. And then how much can you send over to your capital improvement plan? So that's going to be an issue I think we have to kind of grapple with to, you know, figure out a good recommendation for the council. But ultimately, that's going to be, I think, part of your deliberation this year is how do you resolve some of that tension and do the things that you want to do with the resources that are available. So that's, that's part of it, I think, is, you know, there are some things we're thinking about that aren't necessarily going to be raising tax rates, but it's going to be, there's probably a lower contribution over the capital plan to take some of that money that's currently programmed for operating, from your operating revenues over to capital. And there are probably a few other things that we look at and say, well, maybe there are some things we do that, you know, as you know, we're receiving jail buy-in proceeds and we're trying to set some of those funds aside for debt service, existing debt service. And then we have concerns that, again, there's a big expansion looming out there. And how much should we be setting aside, you know, for that? But there, that gives us some, certainly some funds to maneuver and how we would suggest to use those dollars.
How much do we have presently in that, in that line item in the CIP for the jail expansion?
For the expansion, we don't have anything. For the future debt service on the, so the way that we set it up, you get your jail buy-in proceeds for another five years, I think till 2025. And so your jail debt, those are about six hundred thousand dollars in your debt payment on your jail. For, at the jail is about three hundred and thirty. So we took six hundred and thirty, moved it, saved two hundred and some change and paid three hundred and thirty thousand towards the current year debt with the hope to save enough by 2025 to float you until basically the debt falls off in 2030, I believe. So there's about two hundred and fifty thousand maybe there.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, just, you may recall that when we first, we were first receiving those buy-in proceeds, we were setting those funds aside primarily in a committed reserve to, for the industrial park improvements. And then last year, other than some of the funds that were held for debt service at the jail, we moved a lot of those monies over to the capital improvement fund for Sunset Park. And I think most of it was moved to be able to set some money aside for Sunset Park.
The ladder truck.
And the ladder truck. We've, yes, we're purchasing a fire ladder truck that's.
Much needed to.
Much needed to. Have a purchase order cut. They're making a truck as we speak.
They started building it?
I don't know about that.
The pre-build meeting is not until March, I think.
And it's actually, it's two hundred and ninety-four thousand, sorry, for what's in that reserve.
Two ninety-five, two ninety-four in the reserve present.
We've had quite a lot of conversation. I think you've been given some heads up that the jail board has authorized the jail superintendent to begin a study for, that would lead to, you know, scope of an expansion. And, but the nature of the expansion, the dollar value is a big swing. Whatever it would be, you know, we, our contribution is about fifteen percent. That's, you know, based on ratio of how much of the capacity of the jail we use.
Does the state kick in on any of that?
Twenty, twenty-five percent on new construction.
Yeah. So, but that, that project could be a twenty million dollar, it could be a sixty-five million dollar project. We're, we're, I think it's got to be closer to twenty million. But a lot of it is, you know, you have to have, you know, adequate space, you know, for beds. But that, again, that's several years off, but it's not too soon to start to at least think about. You know, it's like some of the other projects that we've taken on, you know, it took several years to set aside the money to pursue those projects.
Seeing like a twenty-five million dollar jail expansion, what's the general thought? Well, I guess, I know that, what would the, what would the, the, probably impossible to ask, there's so many other variables, what the, what the debt service would be?
Well, we, twelve million is the local portion.
Yeah, so then you figure, we're probably six or seven hundred thousand dollars total debt service. And then, so we're at fifteen percent of that. Is that about how the math works?
Is I running twenty, I think I was running twenty million yesterday. And it came up to nine seventy-five for the total, which we would be fifteen percent of the nine seventy-five, which a hundred and fifty thousand approximately.
And then in addition, I mean, that's an every year, you know, payment. And then an additional, whatever the additional contribution for operation, because you've expanded space, you're going to need more staff, all that sort of. It's a tough one. And again, the conversation we had at the staff level was that it's, you know, it's difficult for us to come to a council now and say, you could have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar problem, or it could be three times that size. And so, you know, there's a lot of work to be done to ferret that out. And by the time we started to increase the tax rate and set money aside for school borrowing, we, we had a pretty good sense it was going to be a twenty million dollar project. We had a, you know, a number certain to give a council. So we're in the spot where we neither want to cause panic and alarm, but neither do we want to find ourselves three years from now not having prepared for the inevitable, so.
Sometimes I like to ask, you know, what's the worst that could happen? So I was going to ask this question. So we already have a condition where there's a three, two hundred percent increase over, per cell at the, at the current jails, I understand, at two hundred and change. So the question would be, at what point, I mean, that apparently seems to be not desirable, but acceptable. I mean, we're not, no one's coming from the state or otherwise to say, what's, when are you going to do this expansion? What's sort of the trigger point to when you have to to do that? Of course, we hope people just would not be incarcerated, obviously, and not break the law. But what do you?
Well, I think it comes to when your, your board leadership and your superintendent tell you that it's not safe, that it's not healthy and it's not safe for the individuals that are incarcerated or your staff. And I think that, I don't know if you want to quantify, that's more of a, a sort of a narrative answer to your question. But if you want a more quantitative, I don't know that we start living above nine ninety on a daily basis, that's, people are going to start pressing, I think.
Is that kind of what you're hearing there?
Yes. Once you get to the point where you're contemplating renting beds from another facility and sending your, having to send your, you own a jail, but you're having to send incarcerated people to another jail and rent beds from that jail, that's when you get.
As a regular part of your program, that's going to be a financial, that will motivate you as much as your ethical response to difficult and unsafe living conditions and work conditions.
So preceding this council, so the buy-in, the jail buy-in from, is it Harrisonburg and Rockingham or just Harrisonburg?
Harrisonburg and Rockingham.
So the buy-in for that, that generated six hundred thousand dollars for the original buy-in for the construction, now they would now become unequity buying partner, mutual partner in the future expansion. But we're still incarcerating their original inmates that were brought in theoretically. But we're, we're still incarcerating a portion of their.
Their popu, their sentence population.
Their sentence population.
And they're operating another jail. So they operate a jail and then they also participate in our jail. And they were facing the expansion for their community. They needed additional bed capacity. They're in a downtown environment and vertical expansion, as I understand it, is expensive and difficult. And so rather than building a greenfield site, they approached us. And it's, it works out as, the cash was beneficial to Middle River and the buy-in to an existing facility was beneficial to Harrisonburg, Rockingham and the state, the Commonwealth.
And so that was a ten-year, ten-year buy-in?
Correct.
So we're looking at a current balance of two ninety-four and recognizing absent the last year or two, we've been doing the transfers into CIP line items. That's still a good chunk of time for where did the other six hundred thousand dollars per year go?
It's all been held in fund balance, that you've got some of it set aside. And in the early years was moved to help offset our contribution, our required contribution to the southern corridor project, that we have about a two-point-two million dollar contribution that we'll have to make there. And so there's, but essentially all of the proceeds that we've received have been set aside in fund balance to date. And so.
But then some of that was moved into the CIP, correct?
Correct.
So that was, to recall, there was a two-point-five, three-point-five or something that we used as a base saying, well, it's not enough to do the industrial park.
That's right.
If we use it for the projects now, we, we see the, we see things happening rather than just sitting there. So that's where that other quantity went.
So our, that two and a half, that's our contribution for the southern corridor project, that is wholly funded by the six hundred thousand dollar a year over time.
Is that an accurate statement, Cameron?
I don't know. That's a question.
So I believe that was broken up into two payments. And we have the first payment wholly funded and then over the next three to four years in the CIP, we tried to break the next payment down into more bite-sized pieces so that it will be wholly funded through the CIP process.
Okay, okay.
So you have the payment that's due now and then you'll have another payment due in three years that you're saving towards that. I think you already.
The question is if someone on the street were to ask, well, we're receiving money for six hundred thousand dollars a year to support the impact to our existing jail facility and incarceration, increased incarceration and bedding. And it sounds like we spent the first half payment for a share of the industrial park.
No, I don't think I, I wouldn't describe it like that. I think early on, the council, and I think the staff supported this action, was to, we took the buy-in money and started saving it for the industrial park.
Yeah, bearing in mind.
Well, I guess, that's what, well, maybe I didn't say it right.
You said you were saving it for the jail.
I'm sorry, no, no, that rather than spending, rather than setting the six hundred thousand dollars a year aside for jail, we set it for the industrial park.
And that was money you had that you'd bought into, that you'd already bought and built a facility and paid for and they were basically paying you back. You had no obligation. You can use that revenue for whatever you chose.
Sure, yeah, understood, understood. I just didn't understand choices along the way.
Yeah, and I don't think, at least, I don't recall any conversation that was coming from the jail at that time that you need to be setting this aside because.
Five years from now.
Well, yeah, who knows? Everybody's.
Yeah, when you're sitting there, when we started getting that in 2012 or so, then nobody was saying, now, don't forget, eleven years from now, you're going to have to do an expansion. So you should save all this for that, you know. So at that point, you had bed capacity. In fact, I can remember in some of those early days, we actually rented beds to other communities. We had that kind of capacity in the jail.
Up until last year, you were renting beds. And that's where you've seen our percentage has actually gone down a little bit in the jail. Not that our head count has gone down, but the number of our, our population compared to everyone else has gone down to what it was about a percent this year, from seventeen down to fifteen and some change. But we were renting beds up until last year to other facilities and then just ran out of space.
Yeah. I think that, I mean, if I were to, if I were trying to, I don't know if defend is the right word, but to explain to folks what's happened to the money, I would say that there was some foresight on the past councils and current councils to say, this is windfall money and we should save it for capital projects so that it's sitting there, you know, available for, you know, those kinds of, whether it's.
It's a lot better than just rolling it into operations. There's no question about that.
You know, other things that, you know, that the past council said, let's set aside for industrial park. The current council says, let's do something that's of more immediate concern to us in our CIP. And it looks as if, I don't know if I'm reading that correctly, Cameron, that the two thirty, the two-point-three million just went to CIP and then was redistributed from there? Did it go primarily to one project or another? Is that even an accurate way to look at it?
No, that's a great way to look at it. So you basically had three or four projects that you funded locally last year. You funded your ladder truck. I don't have the CIP up, I've got the fund balance numbers. So you, your CIP contribution last year was about one, was about three-point-four million dollars from prior year funds, not your, not from your current year operating budget. So you had some excess unassigned fund balance that you coupled with that industrial park money and moved it to your CIP. Your ladder truck was about one-point-four. Sunset Park, the reserve we set up was about eight hundred or nine hundred thousand. And then you had the southern corridor first payment and then the reserve for the southern corridor. So some of that money that has been moved and has not, the reserve for the sunset park and the sunset corridor, the reserve hasn't been, or sorry. or sorry, southern corridor reserve hasn't been, it's just in a reserve still.
As I say, I think it's probably important for the next session to really do a good look at where we are with fund balance.
You had on the last slide, you know.
Well, this is helpful. I mean, I, I, I think, I appreciate this process and I think it's helpful not just for me and hopefully for others, but I think for our community to, to sort of follow this along. This is essentially very similar to, to setting up your, your family budget for, for what the year looks like, you know, and, and your goals and aspirations don't exactly always align to your revenue. And so, you know, you, you make some adjustments along the way. So I think this is, this is helpful so that there's absolute complete transparency into the process and that we know what, we, all the taxpayers will know what we're buying and we're spending our money on. So this is very helpful for me.
Good. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to achieve and as Mr. Shaw alluded to, you can see sort of some of the, the key choices are gonna be at what magnitude and what pace do you prioritize compensation versus the path that we, or the strategy, the plan that we established last year for your capital aspirations? And those are two big levers and there's inherent, there will, I think increasingly be pressure on those two levers and we'll look, Terry mentioned alignment, we'll look to make sure to the best of our ability, my ability, to bring a, a recommendation that aligns with your expectations. And then the, the difficult task that you have of aligning your vision for a budget with the community's appetite for service, investment and ability to pay. I think that's the, as the mayor alluded to, the real benefit in these conversations that as we make decisions along the way, that we, we preserve or work toward maximizing alignment at several levels. Awesome. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I apologize for being late.